Henderson City Council, Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. It's called work. First order of business is the acceptance of the September 17th, 2025 meeting. Other additions or revisions?
No, I have twice reviewed that and I find that satisfactory. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, and I'll be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made, carried. Well, Chris, you're up.
I'll have to check and see which one's first, the Hummingbird Trail or the Allison's Park.
Trail heads first.
All right, trail heads. So I have in front of me today the application number two for the Allison's Park campground. I'm sorry. For the Hummingbird Trail. And this is an amount of $64,445.39. This is for all work on the project except for signing and striping. It's still holding 5% retainage. I don't have a signed copy in front of me here today. I still wait for the contractor to return that over. So any authorization today would be contingent upon getting that signed copy from the contractor. But this is, except for pretty much all of work, except for the signing and striping. I will know if the striping that's out there is going to have to be redone.
We need to talk about that.
Yes.
I think it's more than being redone. I mean, I'm not going to accept the ghost image of their wrong stripe under these. I don't care what they have to do, but it's going to look brand new. People's heart and soul went into that trail. And it's a showpiece to the city of Madison. And for us to present that to the public would be a total embarrassment.
No, I agree. And that's something that I did make clear to the contractor during our walkthrough today. Is that generally there's two options. One is with water blasting and remove it out or seal or fox seal it and then start over again. Fox seal would just give us a nice black canvas to work with, I guess. And I did talk it over with Tim Becker, too. He stopped by after our walkthrough ends. Seal coders, something like that is something he mentioned as well as an option, so.
The seal code would work?
Yeah, so the fox seal, a seal code would give you long-term improvement beyond the project.
Was that permanent?
Well, a seal code isn't permanent, but seal coating does improve your pavement. So the pavement, after we install, sealing it sooner than later will preserve that pavement for longer. So if the contractor was to seal coat it and then come back and paint it, it would take care of the striping, but also would give you better product in the end.
Permanently sealed would permanently eliminate the ghost lines?
If it's sealed coated prior to striping, yes. Because they'd just be essentially oil over top of. So you wouldn't see them. So the striping they use is multi-component, which is an oil base. So what they're applying over top of is the oil base, so it should stay.
Will it wear off and expose the striping layer?
Seal coating would be like the seal coating where else in town have you used on the streets before?
Well, it will wear off.
It will wear off eventually, but by the time that wears off, by the time that wears off, the striping will come up with it. So those are just ideas. I mean, I guess I'd ask the contractor to propose something to make it the way it's supposed to be. And so seal coating is one, fox sealing, which is just the oil without the rock. And then if they can beat water blasting, that's another option.
I wouldn't even entertain water blasting because you see the, you see the striping.
Usually they, usually they do sand blasting and that's when you really can see it. Or they'll just.
Yeah, but I see MINDU projects where they're changing lanes constantly and it never looks right.
They, they don't do water blasting MINDU very typically. So they'll come through with the sand blaster. It's multiple at half the price is why they do it. But those will take off the top a little bit, skin the surface while the water, doing the water should protect the surface below. So I mean, it could be that they attract you water blasting and it doesn't turn out, then we expect them to do the alternative.
Well, it'll look brand new.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm not, I'm not authorizing that payment until this is resolved.
Sure.
This is their screw up and they screwed up multiple times through the process with detours and the fact that they need a punch list to know if put on Troy's street sign back up. They need to, they need to step up and make this right. And yeah, I'm not happy. So.
Would you want to make a motion that is contingent upon those items or is it probably just more of a maybe a month means that if you don't pay, if you don't prove validation now, it does take another month to get to that point? Is that something that could be considered or should be considered?
So your question is, should we approve this? This doesn't include the striping.
It doesn't include the striping and you're still holding 5%. So you're, you're holding $10,000.
This doesn't.
I'm sorry. It still holds 5% payment. So there's around $14,000 of retainage on this payment.
I don't know how much leverage I want us to give up in creating some urgency to get this fixed in the middle of October. It's just a rocket surgery. You show up with a map on shirt and someone's there and says, you got the right thing here? Yeah, yeah, here's this 60 degrees or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, they said they'd do their Tuesday show.
I don't want to give up any leverage in helping them understand the urgency of getting this fixed in quite a time in the end.
Yeah, I don't think $14,000 is enough to worry about because I think the fix is more important than the budget.
It's not, it's not going to create an urgency this time of year when they got other fires burned and then they got addressed. I would recommend maybe before they show up, once they get rid of the stripe, someone's on site with them before they start blasting white paint, making sure they tell us, say, hey.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so I kind of mentioned there, but they were supposed to be here on Tuesday. They showed up Monday and just gave us a phone call and said, we're doing 60-degree parking. And they absolutely did not do 60-degree parking. So that loses three parking spaces beyond just not fitting the parking lot, so.
Well, and you know, even if we accepted what was there, I don't think the state of Minnesota will accept what's there.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's paying for it ultimately. MINDU does their whole construction.
Their spec is pretty rigid.
Yeah, I mean, it meets the spec of what's put in there, but it doesn't meet the plan. So the plan was 60-degree parking, so the expectation is they put in 60-degree parking.
Well, and it's not going to hurt WW because they're going to beat up their striping contractor. They're the ones that are going to pay for it. So I don't know. I mean, I guess we can approve it and just say we're not giving you a check until we're happy. We're trying to do it.
We can do that, withhold the check until we're happy with the last project, yeah.
Yeah, there are options to make payment, increase retainage, or not make payment until you're satisfied. So 5% standard retainage. And the only thing that's costing us as far as doing things outside the contract, as far as we're not paying until this item is done. If it's a, you know, $5,000 item and you're holding $10,000.
We don't know what it costs to be.
A seal coat on something like this would just be $3,000. It'd be a pretty small area if that was the fix.
They're going to seal coat everything.
It'd be the whole parking lot, yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm trails too. I don't want to.
Well, trails probably aren't going to happen.
I don't know. I'm, I am, Chris, you don't understand what a rage I am in with this. I mean, literally, this is so amateurish. This is so ridiculous. And another contractor shows up late or shows up early and gives us a crap job and wants to get paid. I have no sympathy for them.
Sure, I do, yeah.
And quite frankly, I don't think, and Troy is right, in this fall, we are a month for the freeze-up where it can't be done. In fact, you know, it could close up on us next week and not get done. So we're stuck with it.
Yeah, we are pushing gates as far as seal coat, usually 60 degrees and up is where our temperatures on seal coating. Payment markings are 40 degrees and higher. So yeah, yeah, we're going to push the limit here. And if it's saying payment is approved, but won't be made until the city's satisfied with the parking lot repairs, that's certainly.
So 60 degrees, is that just the application? Does it need to maintain 60 degrees for 24 hours?
It's going to dry relatively quick. So usually the general guidance on, I want to say a highway project is we don't seal coat after, after September 1st. And that's just more of a, you're doing a big area type of situation. It's just general guidance. But I'd probably say in an area like this, if we're in the 60s, I feel comfortable applying it.
Let me ask you this. If the players involved here, WW and their contractor, are they aware of what happened and aware of what you might have heard from us tonight? And they're going to demonstrate some urgency in getting this fixed? Do you have confidence in that?
I do, but I think that it needs to be more obvious. And that's something I can make obvious to them as far as what the requirement is. It needs to be addressed. And if it's, if we do run into a situation where it's just a, it's not addressed in a timely manner, I mean, we will certainly not pay them for work and hold more than 5% retainage if it gets to a seasonal type of a situation where we don't want them to make the fix in adverse conditions just to make the fix. Because this is a product that you're going to have out there for quite a long time. There's, there's going to be a two-year warranty on any of the work after placement, after file payment is made. So it will be a warranty for two years afterwards, so we'll have that time to monitor it. But the tough thing with warranties is that you're not holding a check during the warranty period or just saying, I feel fixed, I'll call your bonding agency. And so I would like to see what they, they plan to do. And I think if they can demonstrate something that works, then more power to them and we can, we can get agreement. What I may ask is if this is a decision that needs anyone from council or any from the city to agree with. So if they do propose something, I'd make recommendation, but.
They had 42 days to complete the project. They didn't make that either.
They went one week over, I think, anyhow.
Was there a penalty involved in that?
There can be.
The old week would have been easier to absorb if there would have been some communication saying, hey, here's the situation. Whatever, whatever reason was, but we never heard anything. We established that at the last meeting, that we just never heard anything. And then they were asking for an extension. Communication is pretty ham.
Marty, you're here with us.
So what are our options? We approve this payment, but hold a check? And that's different than just.
Hold up a payment period and hit what's our, what's our... After the checks settle, how long do we have to pay?
Thirty days. Thirty days, yeah.
After we write the check.
You'll write the check to the county, right?
Prove it.
What's up? How long is it? The county takes a week or two to do that payment, too. I mean, we wouldn't send it out until we got that back anyhow. Okay. Plus whatever else. You have it as a call.
All right, well, I want to, I want to see it look like brand new.
If it's not dressed in a month, we'll, I mean, that's, we're on time.
Not dressed in a month, it's going to be real serious.
I'll hold that conversation with Chad tomorrow as far as the expectation on that.
Chad is WW's.
Chad's the, the super, the project manager for WW, yeah. Yeah, so as far as the punch list items go, we do have the biggest one, the glaring one is the striping. And then the secondary, there are some pavement repairs in the trail that need to be made. Some areas where some gouging happened and one area where they took a loaded truck and decided to drive down the middle of it, so.
I still have a street sign that's laying in my yard, too. I sent him a picture of that.
Across the street, yeah?
I've been getting lost up the way home.
Are you sure?
I'm going to back judge him for the time I spent driving out trying to find my house.
Are they going to put the informational signs back in?
Informational signs are, were not included with the contract.
We are going to let the trail committee design the, the signs and make it.
Make it cohesive.
We'll all move back up. We just don't want to put it up and then interfere with what they need to do.
I didn't talk to Tim Becker, too. He's going to send over the example of what they're doing north of this area. So we'll be looking for something cohesive. Because he mentioned that and then there's also some, they're, they're getting a plaque for the rest of the trail. He mentioned might be going in this area, but that's something I told him to bring to the city. That's more for the regional trail north of town, but it might make sense to put it on the city side instead.
Sure. So I just said they were supposed to come on Tuesday, but they came on Monday?
Yep.
You guys planning on having your project or your team here on Tuesday?
We were going to have somebody out there when they do the pavement markings, but then...
On Tuesday?
They just called and said, we're here. And so, yeah. I mean, Tuesday it rained, so we didn't work down any roads, but I'm guessing maybe that's what affected their schedule. But we were very clear on the striping and there's a detail showing how to do it correctly. So not sure what happened there.
Well, after the career construction, we had a clear idea of what happened.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Well, we'll do it with the bills.
Do you want to make a separate motion for this?
Sure.
Because I think we need a stipulation.
Okay, what's this motion sound like? I move that we approve the payment, but hold the payment until we're satisfied with the final striping at the parking lot. Is that a motion?
What's a motion?
Is it concise?
We didn't clean enough.
Okay. I start with words.
I'll second.
Yeah. Motion made, seconded, and I'll be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made, carried.
The second amendment I pray tonight is regarding the Allison's Park Campground electrical site improvements. So I did provide for your package. It's a draft set. It's probably 9% complete of the, the improvements that are proposed. Just a reminder, these are electrical site, electrical improvements for each of the sites only and not just general electrical permits to the, to the bathroom facility and some street lighting. So we do have 17 campsites that will receive a pedestal with a 50, 30, and 20 amp plug-in. We are accounting for, the sizing for that site, size of the site would be a 4 and amp service would be enough for the, for the entire area. We are sizing that at 600 amp to allow future expansion. So you're limited in the panel. So if you do expansion and just do running in the circuits wherever it needs to go, this would also replace, well, it would consolidate the area because currently there are two electrical services. One on the bathroom facility and the other one on the pole near the tornado siren. So this will consolidate in one service. It's just a little cleaner to do it that way versus keeping both of them. So all your electrical coming out in one, one spot. We are proposing to put the source of power and transformer on the east side of the road coming into the campground. So this would be closer to the pop pole that's over there and closer to the tornado siren, but less in the way of the general campground. We have a sturdy coordination Excel. They called me on Monday. I don't know if they called the city first or not, but I did get a call from them and they're going to coordinate that through our electrical designers, far as sizing and everything. There are two options, I guess I will say, as far as the Excel work. It might have mattered a whole ton how it's done, but one is that the city would pay for Excel to bring in the new service and the transformer and do that separately. The second is to include it in the contract and we would take the cost that Excel provides us and put a hard number into the contract. So it would say Excel, Excel Energy Transformer and Service, $15,000. And that's just the cost it is. And then make the responsibility of the contractor to do all the coordination after award of the contract. So they are the ones talking to Excel and taking the timing down and all that kind of stuff. There's the advantage there is that, you know, for this project, we are providing full-time construction observation and all that kind of stuff. So it kind of takes, gives, makes the contractor do it. So that could be a methodology to do it. But otherwise, I guess one thing else I know as far as our, our plans are for each of the sites to be to leave the wood pedestal, wood post in each of the sites, pull off the electric, but leave the water that's attached to it and leave the pamphlet holder, whatever we might call that, goes on top of it. And that all still stay there and then the new electrical service rebuilt. We go with just a generality as far as locations. We don't say plan exactly where it needs to be. It just has to be between 0 feet and 15 feet in the back and between 5 and 7 feet off to the side, always on the driver's side of the, of a vehicle backing up, so. And then the bathroom would be connected, the bathroom panel would be reconnected into this new system, new panel. The old panel will still be left in place and just be backpedged. And then the tornado siren would also come off of this new panel that's being installed.
Yeah, there are... When the electrical runs down, there's no, there's, there's no impact on the existing on top trail or...
Just to be honest.
Because it's all on the outside.
The only cap out there is what Excel says they need to do something. I think all their stuff might be overhead in this area. So maybe they would be coming over here. So the only thing would be power coming into the site, which we would know Excel's plan and is, and they tell us. And the schedule I provided to Excel was construction in April and May, which they had no concern about. If it was earlier, they would have concern because then they're working in frozen soils.
Sure.
But they, they seem to be outboard that schedule.
Okay.
So what I do have for you today is an authorizations for us to advertise the project. This is on a schedule to be awarded at your December meeting. So working back to that point, a bid opening on December 12th and started advertising three weeks prior on November 21st. Could be earlier, but doesn't really provide too much benefit to advertise early in that since they won't look at till before bids. But this would be three weeks of advertising. And we would just do that normal route through the paper and then electronic as well.
I'll make a motion. I'll second. Motion made, seconded, and I'll be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion made, carried.
So I have for those unless you have any questions for me?
Did we ever determine what the red marks were on the trees of the Allison's Park?
Do you know?
Red marks and, yeah, a lot of trees of the Allison's were tagged with a...
Like a red spray paint mark. Yeah, I don't know. Have no idea why. We're going to be quite a...
We are working around the trees and I'll say that much, though. All right.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, will you keep Tim in the loop on how it goes with Chad and just so we can all be kept abreast of this situation?
If I have to call him.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a September 2025 police report. We had 155 directed patrols and resident watches, 11 traffic details and one parking 34 traffic stops, 30 warnings and four citations. Eight city ordinances and noise animal complaints. Five were city ordinances, one noise and two animal complaints. 10 assist other agencies, six law enforcement, two fire medical and two city public works. Miscellaneous crimes and incidents, we had three, one warrant, one scan and one property damage. Welfare checks, we had 13, 12 juvenile concerns and one child welfare check. Suspicious, we had five suspicious calls and five anonymous. Four public, then four public assists and one civic assist. There was four traffic citations, the juvenile incidents. The increase in that was due to the homecoming that they sort of kids were over here doing stuff. And there was something else that was special here. The residence watches and one business watch that's down because the houses are being re-occupied and the one business, they're only down to one occupied business, unhired business. There's two masked flaggers, there was a half-masted blue police. The two Luger rifles have been purchased or squat, and are in our squads, capable for the purchase at the August City Council. By reducing accessory items and purchasing cheaper brands of rifles, we have remained within the scope of the project. That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a park hours sign down in North Park? A park hours sign that says, you know, 10 o'clock is in there?
Which part?
Was there one there? The new one we just got done with? Was there one there before? I never saw one, but.
I don't, I don't think it says that. I don't think there was ever a sign that said that.
Yeah, we should probably have one there because that's going to be a lot of people spending time on that. They're going to be around the town. With all the parks close to 10. It's not considered. Oh, another thing, too, is that around North of Tom, we had, it was already an ATV sitting on the trail.
That's going to be a challenge for the town. If we see them coming into town on our trail, we need to, oh, yeah, a lap down.
I didn't stop to talk. The person wasn't by the ATV, it wasn't, I couldn't see him.
Yeah, they were parked there. I think they were scouting. Yeah. For us, because it was about that. But yeah, I mean, and the county's going to have to, they're going to have to.
They have to put sign in the general.
And then hopefully there's going to be enough signage out there that they, well, the signs don't stop it, but.
But at least, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I can go into some of the other service stuff. The intermediate load station pump was ordered, we're going to come late November before that comes in, get that installed. Just letting them see a normal following. We may have talked about this last month, but the flow here of the main load station failed. It's coming in at, I think, around $8,000. I just said we got to get that done. That's primarily, that's where, you know, that's, that's the flow that we're trying to sort of coming out of our main load station. So 53 quotes, that one's on order as well. Doesn't matter, they've been busy in town. Flush divers yesterday. He said it took less than half the amount of time it took before. Water was much clearer. He was pretty happy with that. Let's see, tomorrow, tomorrow when I'm at our place, coming back, we're going to take a look at things. It's driving down there. It's clear, it's clear out. And I hope to get you back on Friday and perhaps you'll want to get that finished. Electric pump will be back in to install the main load station pump 27th and 28th. We just updated the resolution. Let's see. Utilities, well, next month I'll bring the actual assessment list, who are considering for assessments. Hopefully a separate assessment coming in for a fairly large, 2000 pound dock boarding charge that the city had to, to 304.
Dock boarding?
Yeah, it was a HPD had to call, had a dock boarded. It was going to, it would be abandoned if it wasn't. And so we had it boarded for about a month. It's a little over $1,000. They'll just be assessed back to the program.
That's why that's been addressed on the tool where the docks will stay there for five days and then they're sent to the show. And they'll be billed for five days.
Going forward.
Yeah.
Going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, everyone says it's only going to try. I think it will be forward, so.
Let's see, dump truck, I'm working on getting a couple of vendors for quotes on that auction. I think we'll find something like that. I did have read an order, a fairly large compost science, about four feet by four feet to put up there with all of our, our rules and regulations according to compost sites we can.
What is the situation up there now? Is it accepting?
Yeah, we're, it's open now.
Okay.
Hasn't been burning. We've had, been monitoring to keep that down.
Can I rant for a little?
Yeah.
I'd like to rant about the compost site. Compost means things that break down ultimately in the soil or can be mulched into reusable project, product that...
project, product that breaks down in the soil. It is not for anybody to haul a goddamn tree up there and abandon it. It's specific to less than three inches in diameter, and it is a service the city provides that the city is not mandated to provide, and if it becomes any more difficult to maintain that site, I would support closing the damn thing down. If people cannot use common sense and common courtesy not light the thing on fire, it's going to go away. Okay?
Yeah, the place has made great strides over 10 years, in terms of being clean and organized and everything, but yeah, I don't...
And it is only for residents of Henderson. It is not for anybody from a neighboring town or a neighboring township. If they are township residents, then they have to rely on the services provided by their township government, so...
Three inch diameter?
Three inch diameter, so we don't end up with trees.
The sign will be cleared, they will, they will know.
Okay.
That's about all I have for activity. I do have a letter license for approval, coming from the license bar. This will be for off sale, so it's something with the license. But that would require a motion for approval.
I will sort of...
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, seen by by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up for that, beginning in 2026, so they have paid leave law coming in, paid family and medical leave. City of Henderson will have required payroll contributions, either both from the city and employees. For us, we're a small city, and as far as we're 0.66% of wages, total will be somewhere around there, $300 for a year for all the staff.
Is that per person?
No.
That's total?
That's total.
Okay.
And it would just, it would depend on, you know, if it's reported quarterly with unemployment, that's how they calculate that. I think for 26, it'd be based on 25, the highest, 25 salary levels. I am here, I'm recommending a 50/50 cost share, after speaking with Jason and having Paul see the next page, that seems to be where Henderson's landing at this point. I'm also recommending that with that, we'll be allowed a PTO top off. There's a, there's a limit to being offered a state with pay for someone unpaid leave, or PTO top off, allow an employee to, to use their own PTO to get to it.
Okay, so after 20 weeks, someone has 80 hours, they can use their PTO for an additional however much PTO they have.
For, for this, they can use their PTO for pay, essentially to get to where they would be at their regular wage. There's, there's maximum limits, which would be paid from the street state through the program, above and beyond that would be covered.
Oh, I understand, so this might not fully cover their wage, but they can use some of their PTO to get to their 40 hour, whatever it would be, their salary, their hourly wage over a 40 hour period to...
Yes.
If, in the event they didn't want to endure a loss of income, correct?
Yes. The policy is on the next page, just going, also press a handbook, following that, this is the actual notification, might have to go up to the employees, notifying them of their share, should be 50% or 0.33% of their total wage reduction. That's part of the sign, an acknowledged perception. And with that, I'm going to take a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all favor seen by by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion made, carry.
Next one I have is a request for constelation to consider resolution 2025, it's actually 21, vehicle noise enforcement signage request. City of Henderson has authority to force vehicle noise regulations in order to put a sign, state will come again, resolution would be allowed for that. Each sign costs $721, so we can install a dock in the city, city limits within the mid hour rate of wage. I'm recommending, essentially because I have had quite a few complaints coming in from numerous residents, coming in town, the west side, coming down.
Those are the people from the comfy chair at 1:00 in the morning.
I don't think that my house is...
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much getting out of hand.
It's a German sign.
Exactly, exactly.
We can do that again.
This brought up to four signs, I think January's time, I'm recommending one at this time, construction address. That would at least allow us to move forward with other options, wanted to.
Especially the ones that are adjacent to item 19, needs of relief.
Yes.
The, will the state, will the state, it's illegal to do it anyway?
Yeah.
They might understand. So if we put the sign up, we can take it down inside the city limits, but we can have it come down anyway, so, yeah. It's over.
Right. So that would be resolution 2025, 21.
I'll make that a motion. Second. Motion made, seconded, all favor seen by by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion made, carry.
After that, I just have, that was all I had actually. And there's a special meeting if you wanted to go into salary recommendations or anything like that, otherwise is what is being recommended at this time for 2026 salary and funding recommendations. That follows with, with that classing of the budget and salary, and the change, maybe the public works, police department, which is a much, you know, time sheet. Let's see, that's all I got.
Do you want to put that?
Let's hold. I want a discussion. Where? I want to fill the ball. Get from you.
Okay.
All right, now. Bills and cash balance. You tell us.
So, W W back topic is obviously here, question, writers will listen to that, the rest of this is all as expected this time of year.
S H is after there, some of these drawings and stuff, or is that...
Yes, my management, two, there's three separate pages in there, a lot of the project, one for this project, one for Anderson.
Okay. People felt that too. Well, they, they got some skin in the game.
Yeah, they do.
Well, yeah, fortunately they came a day earlier, so. People's Service, can I ask a silly question? That's a fixed rate, pretty much.
Patrol.
People's Services, monthly?
Yes, that's the monthly rate for, for this year.
And I'm sorry to back, but we got a nice report here from Lee again. A lot of this stuff, this looks like routine maintenance, are we still finding things that, that just kind of went into disrepair?
Yeah, he's still running, and he's, he's fixing them as they come up. Some of them are taking a little bit longer just because he makes a fix and disrupts something else a little bit.
Okay.
But he's keeping closer, I think. He seems too long to ask, I mean, the way they have it set up in the system, I mean, it's, you know, I've got the monitors, it's all right there, so we always have a little bit of, you know, what's, what needs to be done.
Okay. I think it's made a real difference in the issues we've experienced in the past. I think it's really going to be a game changer for us.
I would say that soap bubbles burst off the top of my sink, now the water, I think, has been better. I think there was a little bit of interruption after we had our leak the end of week, it felt like for a couple of days, it went back to getting sad lapses in the shower, but overall, I think that it...
Yeah, it was a big hole in that.
I understand that, I agree with that.
Where was it, like?
Right in front of my house.
Oh, okay.
It was the main, and it looked like, Lee thinks it was a water hammer where there was, somebody opened and shut the valve too quickly and caused pressure.
I think it was W W.
I think so too.
Well, I mean, it's something...
They're going to be done for the next couple of years.
I gotta wait until I start that day that I didn't notice any difference, but I gotta say my water quality is worse after this last flushing than it was before.
Yeah, well, that's...
I think it was the water main break too.
That's what I think, yeah.
They had to close, you know, they had to, you know, part of it is a learning game too, there were valves that were closed that were thought to be open and things like that in that street, because that, County Road 6 was redone in like 1983, and so that's how old that water main is, but it also, the whole, and the town is looped through there, so they opened and closed almost every valve to figure out how to provide everybody with some water pressure that night, so they, they had to disrupt everything, so yeah, that's what we saw. But in terms of just overall water quality, I think, I just, I think just having it better regulated and really diving into the situation, I think overall it's a better deal.
Did they change the direction of the water out to your house, which can direct or disrupt, and it started back up again?
Okay, no, it was just, it was great before they flushed and before the water main break, and now my, my pressure's down, and it's kind of crappy again, so. Is it still that way today? Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
You should call Lee.
Yeah.
Really, literally, these guys will come and look at your situation.
Okay.
And they will, they might find something.
That I don't...
Well, no.
It wasn't that, it was to get turned.
But it's...
Yeah, yeah. No, because it was great before, and actually it was fine after the break, but since it was, since the flushing, my water pressure was way down and it tastes crappy again, and it was like...
Yeah, I would definitely talk to Lee, I could...
I'll contact you tomorrow and get the number for that.
And since they got done with the lock pipe, so the my house has been great, I was making filters every three weeks.
Well, I think we're reaching the point where we've got the water under control to where, you know, people are setting the pass on, they've got a filter, but it doesn't work, I think, I think now we're reaching the point where we have a manageable...
They have a lot of...
When I actually disconnected my water filtration system, and the water was mine, but it could, you know, it filled us up in the last couple of days, and the pressure was going down, so I will call tomorrow.
And just to meld up about cheap cash balance, that says 760, 408, that was a fourth reimbursement fee back in from the county, so up to $205,000, so that must have been worth it this way, and cost back next month.
What does that tell you about the county?
What's that?
The county or...
That's reimbursement for the trail project.
Okay.
She counted you. Was the recipient, is that...
No, I, I'm not, I'm just...
A couple of their finance related, just deposition editor report, we can go through that if some of the points you want to discuss that further, but mostly I want to point out that there's been, you know, significant, you know, unexpected non-leashing expense in 601 and 602, primarily because of the contracts or people's service, and then a lot of capital purchases of new equipment this year. Still expecting more to come related to the pumps, for sure. Also going to have some of your transfers, 67,000 is money coming in from disaster reimbursement over the past few disasters, owed back to 602 to pay for some of those wastewater treatments on Old Bridge. And then this, as, you know, further reminder that we have quite a bit of, you know, revenue coming in at the end of the year, about $500,000 yet, and property tax, and local government aid. Still working with the state on getting that treaty reimbursement, that's about $85,000, should be coming in fairly soon, and then revenues and utilities are probably around $240,000 coming in yet this year. Let's see here, these numbers starting with TAC, these are straight government expenditures, as a budget. And the last one, the sales tax receipts, continuing that, balances down with a little over $300,000 remaining.
To you of the state?
Yep.
Yeah, right.
And then realized, I don't want to do a motion for bills.
Yeah. I'll make a motion for bills.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all favor seen by by saying aye.
And then just on the schedule, I've had a park board meeting on November 12th at 5:00 PM, that time might be a little bit later, just depending on how we work that out, and just a reminder of treaty taxation coming up in the center.
My favorite, my favorite too. Any city council reports? Just for the mayor's report, Lon and I have been going to the 93 meetings because, well, after we discovered that they had freed up some time and were able to do the levy extension last month, they freed up some time to possibly build the flood wall yet this fall, so that would be a great thing. There's a, it's a sewer line that comes down and has to be extended, as that's being done, or later, I'm not clear, but anyway, so they may move that forward. The bridge over the Rush River, the main bridge is complete, the secondary bridge is not complete, but all the, all the base is basically in place, except for small segments. And there's an overburden, a surcharge on top of a lot of it, so if you manage to get out there, you can find that road some places, it's three, three feet higher than it'll be, but they're actually, and I got to say this, and I'll say it publicly, you can say what you want about County Road 6, but at least the contractor on Highway 93 shows up every day.
Are they still thinking 27 sometime?
Yeah.
Have they, time frame in 27, that's a big year.
They have, they have a, not 27, it's 26.
Oh, 93 and 26.
Yeah, next month.
Next month?
But there's a, there's a public meeting...
Yeah, there'll be an informational meeting on...
Next week?
Next.
20...
Next Monday?
7th.
So.
Okay, what's the 23rd? Who's coming to see you on the 23rd?
Is that the document that we showed from the legislature?
Is that what it is?
There, it's the committee that, the bond.
Right.
They want personal experience.
I'm hearing now that it's a pretty large... I'm hearing now that it's a pretty large group, actually.
Oh, really?
Thirty-ish people, just wanting to go into this room.
Oh, cool. And we've got some testimony from them.
Yeah, we have Lon and Philip, who are still.
Okay.
When is that? I'm just curious.
No, you should be there.
You should be there.
Yeah.
I, I would like to come to things like that.
Twenty-third, it's only fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, maybe.
It's, they're toward the state to look at.
Yep.
Projects for the bonding bill.
Yep.
This one's for water. You know, one thing we have to prepare ourselves for, too, is we have to get a handle on our infiltration in our sewer system, because we've got a big drain tile system that's basically sending a couple hundred gallons, a hundred thousand gallons daily over to the sewer, that we are charged for, so. No, not the big one, so, it's probably a bigger problem in the water.
And then that meeting is the twenty-seventh. At the end of the month, I think.
Over here.
Yep. Yeah, Rachel asked, I'm going to take a picture at three this morning to put in the paper, I noticed that meeting, just to kind of get his attention. So I took a picture of the road closed sign, and they're not looking.
Yeah.
And it was kind of a great shot, kind of for all this danger, so I assume that's that they're working on the bridge, so.
Yeah, they had, they're skirting one of the big piling systems, and also pouring the abutts for, to set the beams. But, yeah. Any old business? Any new business? Any revised meeting schedule? Not too many of those meetings that are coming up are lost, but excellent.
Yep, that's the only one.
So we do have a motion connected.
Yeah.
I'll make that a motion. What did you move? Put the parks, the revised meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. And if there's nothing else, we can all go home now.